We're gonna start the agenda review session for Wednesday, June 15, 2016. We have public hearings. You can see, key ordinances on second reading, 602, ordinance to grant a canopy easy within the Plum Street right of way to Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital with a 10 Club Street canopy project. Resolutions, 642, approved agenda amendment, 643, approved payroll, 644, authorized refund of the teen tax sales certificate, 645, approved ABC liquor license renewals, 646, approved request of division of alcohol and beverage control, to act on renewal of planetary retail consumption license, pre-impulsed license, 324 Ellis. License number 121433023001, period July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017. 647, authorized joint application execution and acceptance of grant for 2016 with three, other Little Six County municipalities, US Department of Justice, for 2016 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. 648, disposition of charges against Livingston Liquors to Elizabeth Street, liquor license number 121444046005. 649, disposition of charges against Cancun Bar, 120 Fench Street, liquor license number 650, disposition of charges against Casmatz Incorporated, trading as JJ Tavern, 732 Lounge, 186 Alvin Street, liquor license number 121433034003. 651, authorized property lien for board up security, location 268 Somerset Street, block 97, lot 27, inbound 19435. 652, authorized property lien for board up security, location 218 Towne Street, block 160, block 32, inbound 30054948. 653, authorized property lien for board up security, location 173 Delavan Street, block 218, block 9.01, inbound 30056046. 654, approved amendment resolution R.051651, to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,000.14575 to Mitchner and Mitchner, Police Officer Andrew Weiss in the matter of Rockrivas versus Police Officer Andrew Weiss, from $27,000.23430 to $28,000.3805. 655, approved request for used city property requested by McKinley Community School, New Brunswick Board of Education, location Alice Jennings Archibald Park, for McKinley Community School Field Day, date Friday, June 10, 2016, rain day, Friday, June 17, 2016, time is 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, not pro tumb. 656, approved request for used city property requested by the New Brunswick Recreation Project tomorrow, locations Fisher Park and Alex Baker Park, for simple fee additional activities for residents, date Saturday, June 25, 2016, time 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. 657, approved amendment resolution R.021620, specified field locations at Bureau of Parks, approved request for used city property requested by New Brunswick Department of Recreation, New Brunswick Day of Flood, location Memorial Stadium, date Friday, June 17, 2016, rain day, Friday, June 24, 2016, time 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Location Bureau of Parks, Wardsfield and Two-Side Fields, block 1114 Park and George Street, and by Wayco Street, avoid traffic driving through the park, date Saturday, June 18, 2016, rain day, Saturday, June 25, 2016, time is 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. 658, approved amendment resolution R.081540, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,056.50, Benedict and Allman, for Detective Branch Gregus in the matter of e-trick stolen for City of New Brunswick from 2,0584 to 3,0645. 659, approved amendment resolution R.051606, approved PY2016 cons- cons- cons-ated, can't say that word, consol- consol- that's a big one for me, action plan for CDPG and home funding, CDPG, PY26 allocation, 836808, home PY26 allocation, 366855. 660, approved amendment resolution R.021632, reason correction through award number and amount authorization application execution and acceptance of grant, the State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety for emergency management agency assistance application for funding for fiscal year 2015 grant, $7,000, in time max, $7,008.74. 661, approved request for used city property requested by McKinley Community School, New Brunswick Board of Education, location Alice Jennings Archibald Park, 8th grade district, date Tuesday, June 21, 2016, time 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. 662, approved request for used city property requested by City of Caparcerati, location Bureau of Parks, John and David's Pavilion for awareness walk for the Alzheimer's Association, date Sunday, September 25, 2016, time park use is 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Pavilion use is 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. 663, approved request for street closure requested by NJ Skate Shop and Corporation, location Whitehall Street between Stone Street and Parker Street, for skateboarding jam and demonstrations in conjunction with Go Skateboarder, date 2016, date Tuesday, June 21, 2016, time is 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, police extra duty. 664, approved amendment resolution R.051657, to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,004,1950, to Benedict and Allman for the Police Director Anthony Kukudo in the matter of Victor Rockrivas versus City of New Brunswick, from $22,958.50 to $24,378. 650, 665, approved purchase by Police Department under state contract A89851, Rashad Shee International Corporation Annual Software Support Maintenance for the Police Department, 12-month period commencing January 1, 2016, and ending December 31, 2016, not to exceed $67,000.33010, not pro tumb. 666, approved purchase by Warding Building under state contract A89850, software lessons and related services, M-0003, from Dell Marketing LP, purchase software for the Warding Building, water shooting plant, not to exceed $1,028,950. 667, approved Chapter 159 Budget Services for St. New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety for Safety and Secure Communities, in the amount of $60,000. 668, approved Chapter 159 Budget Services for New Jersey Human Services for Dial-A-Wire Grant, in the amount of $56,000.315. 669, approved Chapter 159 Budget Services Department of Fire and Protection, Green Acres Program, for the New Brunswick Landing, in the amount of $67,767. 670, approved award contract with Premier Northern Atlantic Sales Service, aka RJ Sherman Associates, for one premier stump cutter for the Division of Parks and Shaintree, not to exceed $32,067, the National Joint Powers Alliance Cooperative Parks Purchasing Program. 671, approved award contract with Central Jersey Coalition doing business as Elizabeth Truck Center, for auto body repair for one vehicle for the Warding Building, not to exceed $5,006.7538, Little Six County Cooperative Purchasing Program, CK12 Middlesex. 672, authorized payment for emergency procurement of Warding Building, for insulation for fire, 111, H. B. Law and 318, with Anzalini and Dechepio Incorporated, not to exceed $13,000.282.50, purchase order number D88164. 673, approved amendment resolution R.11948, reason to authorize execution of third amendment, power purchase agreement with NDS Energy Partners LLC for solar panels. 674, authorized execution of a participation agreement, conservation and conservation restriction agreement with the County Middlesex, in connection with the County Middlesex Grant[485.33]
Resolution in the packet appropriate to prepare.
Number three.
Number three involves Casmas Inc. trading as JJ Tavern or what's known as 732 Lounge, liquor license 121433034003. That particular license establishment is represented by Mr. Seika. Mr. Seika, if you're here, if you could please acknowledge your presence, sir.
Well, Seika, if you're here on behalf of Casmas, see.
Thank you. As the council probably recalls, this particular licensee was before the councils a few months back relative to some violations wrought by the New Brunswick Police Department Special ABC Division. We had worked out a consent order. Unfortunately, this licensee finds itself back before this council with a complaint that's been filed by the New Brunswick Police Department Special ABC Section containing 22 counts of violations of ABC regulations. Council and I discussed the matter extensively. We have exchanged discovery as the law so requires. Unfortunately, at this time, we're unable to resolve the matter without a hearing. At least at this time, it looks like we can't resolve it without a full-blown hearing. I estimate a hearing on this matter will take maybe three to four hours. I know the council has other business this evening. We have to line up a lot of witnesses. I spoke to Mr. Seika about the logistics of having a hearing at a future date, and I would propose, since we're short on time tonight, and we have a full agenda, as you can see, that we adjourn this particular matter. I would like to do it on the 20th of July. What I would suggest, perhaps, the council will indulge us, start an hour early at 4:30, start the hearing as far as we can, go into your regular business, and then continue. We have a couple other matters on, liquor license matters, on the 20th. It will be a long evening. Apologize for that, especially if we can't work it out with the licensee here. Having said that, I would ask Mr. Seika to add whatever else I have to.
That's an accurate representation of discussions we've had in the position we're at this morning.
So you haven't gotten, there's no agreement you guys have come up to with? You have 22 counts, am I correct?
Yes. Would, I, TK and I discussed a global settlement. I offered to sit with him to resolve undisputed counts, so we could pare this down only to those which are disputed and potentially shorted.
Well, we're going to give you to the 20th of July. Hopefully, you guys can get together. You know, lawyers are good at making a deal, side deals and agreements. Hopefully, you guys can come to something where we don't have three hours of testimony and everything, that we can get to a fair resolution.
Understood.
Okay. We'll get that done. Everybody else seems to be getting that. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Having said that, Mr. Seika, I assume the council then would be agreeable to carrying the matter to the 20th. There is a resolution regarding disposition of charges on your agenda marked as 5050. That will be amended to reflect that the resolution will actually carry the matter to 4:30 on July 20th. It's a Wednesday afternoon. And if Mr. Seika and I, we plan to meet between now and then and work it out, I'll so advise the council.
Does anybody in the council have any questions on that? Any problems with that? With coming in an hour early, if need be, for the hearing? 4:30 for next meeting? Okay? And we'll also, we'll also adopt either that or.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Number four.
Number four is a matter involving continuation of special conditions on the licensee by the name of Platinum Lounge LLC trading as Perlay and Glove. As the council, I'm sure, will recall, this particular licensee has special conditions placed upon it. And at the time of renewal of that particular license, the law also requires that we advertise that we are going to reimpose the special conditions on the renewal of this license. Number one, so the licensee has an opportunity to be heard, and any member of the public has an opportunity to be heard relative to those special conditions. I will read the special conditions as quick as I can, just so they're on the record. But I will represent to the council, I have spoken with Mr. Becaro, or communicated with Mr. Becaro through email. He represents Platinum Lounge. He has no objection to the reimposition of the special conditions. He unfortunately is traveling, unable to attend tonight's, tonight's hearing.
So, so he's agreed to the same term?
Correct.
You'd like to read them again?
I, I don't need to read them, but I do need to announce that if anyone's here from the public who wants to speak relative to the special conditions.
Is there anybody who'd like to speak on the public, on the conditions of Platinum Lounge? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, in Brunswick today. Can I hear what they are?
Sure. The licensee shall limit its maximum seating at licensed premises to a total of 399 persons. Number two, the licensee will cease the practice of conducting two nights or 18 to enter 21 to drinks events. Three, the licensee shall comply with New Jersey State statutes, New Jersey ABC regulations, and local and city of New Brunswick ordinances regarding advertisements and promotions relative to events at the licensed premises. Four, the licensee acknowledges that the New Brunswick Police Department and/or New Brunswick Fire Department are permitted to and will conduct periodic inspections of the licensed premises at the respect of the department's sole discretion, and the licensee shall comply with all respects of the, or requests of the respective department during such inspection. Five, the licensee shall not allow, permit, or suffer in and about the licensed premises the consumption of alcohol or beverages by persons under the legal age to so consume.
Or is it the exact same that's been there?
Exact same. And six, the conditions placed upon the license shall continue at the annual renewal
Exact same.
Okay, and so then my question to me, if the police department thinks there's a problem there, why aren't they pushing for something different than what the status quo?
of saying, and the licensee hereby consents to increase to within conditions, subject to modification or removal, a part or all, by the City Council, the City of New Brunswick,
I don't think they think there's a problem. I think, I think the conditions that they had on place have been working out, and they
at the City Council's sole discretion.
would be doing quite well. I don't know if somebody's impacted why the special conditions are being imposed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So the police department is recommending the reimposition.
Conditions are there, and it's just been working out quite well, according to the
Licensee is not objecting to reimposition of these special conditions.
tavern report.
And now's the time for anyone who wanted to comment regarding the special conditions.
Okay, I think, I just recall the shooting less than a year ago, right? Or maybe it was a little more than a year ago now.
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to understand procedurally, there's no hearings for the ABC charges for And, you know, especially in light of what happened over the weekend, we need to make the other agents that went through? There's been no opportunity for the public to, to speak about that? sure that people are safe in these places, and 399 people, a lot of people to cram into
Are Platinum Lounge issued again?
No, I mean, the first three. a place and give them liquor, and, I mean, I just, I don't know if the status quo is, Why is there a hearing for this one, but the first three there weren't hearings? You left the public out of the hearing.
There was a hearing, except for today, the hearing was not necessary as a result
what's in order here, but I don't, I don't frequent that place, so I'm, I'm just asking.
of a resolution with council for the licensees.
I'd like the council to be a little more proactive here, and like, for instance, ask
Those particular matters are not for renewal.
what the conditions are, and, you know, what the.
This renewal here, as with any new liquor license, anyone can stand up and jack or talk
The conditions are written in a book that we have, Mr. Cradaville.
Okay.
about the license establishment.
Okay, well, maybe you could ask the police then what the, what the recent history is
That's not what the hearing is for, the charges between the licensee and the City Council.
with the place.
Is that what you'd like to do? That's, that's, that's what gives us the report.
Okay. It's just, it's a little confusing. It's listed on the public hearing, so I was, I just assumed that the public would be part
Anybody like to comment on the Platinum Lounge, police, captain, or detective?
Detective DeRog.
Detective DeRog.
Special officer here. I know, I prepared him to bring him up. Documentation, plus if he could talk about anything that he may recall regarding the prior license year.
In the prior license year, the liquor license establishment, known as Perlay and Glove, is the source of 34 calls for service. Nine of those were related to disturbances or disorderly persons complaints. Beyond that specifics, I want much more queries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President. Yes, then, I don't know if any of your members were aware of that shooting outside of the court?
Yes. It was on the establishment. The shooting was outside. Mr. Cradaville referred to, Mr. Anderson, did you?
That, that's correct. That, that occurred outside.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have any comments on the Perlay continuation of conditions?
Mr. Chairman, yes. Seeing that there's none, we close the hearing at the time of renewal of this particular license, it's not necessary that we then have a hearing on the special conditions. Obviously, as I indicated, though, if anyone at the time of adoption of a resolution has public comments, they always make it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number five?
Next item, number five, is the Kelly's Corner, trading as Kelly's Corner, liquor license 121433028006. This particular license has been renewed several years running with three special conditions. They include the licensee shall not alter the premises from the layout shown in the sketch plan previously furnished by licensee and approved by City Council by Resolution R-061306 and on file with the City Clerk without first obtaining further approval of the City Council. There shall be no live music or live entertainment provided, that this shall not preclude the playing of the jukebox or the television set. And lastly, the above license is granted, subject to lines of zero, ordinance, I'm sorry, 0-029609, as amended relative to educational requirements for managers, which is a requirement for the license establishment section now. This particular licensee has not objected, to my knowledge, I don't know if anyone is here on the Kelly's.
Anybody here on behalf of Kelly's Corner?
If anyone from the public.
Anybody from the public like to comment on this particular continuation of liquor license, Kelly's Corner? Any public comment?
And while you're not, that particular licensee, that will be renewed with those special conditions taken down with renewal application. Lastly, we have continuation, termination of special conditions for LaFamosa Inc., trading as LaFamosa, liquor license 121433045003. The special conditions that are sought to be reimposed and have been in place for several years now are as follows. Licensee shall control loitering in the adjacent area to the licensed premises by posting signs and/or calling for police assistance. Licensee shall provide distinctive attire for security personnel, which identifies their status as security personnel. Licensee shall maintain a video camera on the exterior of licensed premises and shall enter video film for time and date and maintains said tapes for at least 15 days. Licensee shall not alter the premises from the layout shown in the sketch plan previously filed with the City Clerk, without first obtaining the approval by City Council by resolution. And lastly, the licensee shall be in compliance with ordinance O-029609, as amended relative to educational requirements for managers, which is a requirement for the license establishment section now. This particular licensee has not objected, to my knowledge, I don't know if anyone is here on the Kelly's.
Anybody here on behalf of Kelly's Corner?
If anyone from the public.
Anybody from the public like to comment on this particular continuation of liquor license, Kelly's Corner? Any public comment?
And while you're not, that particular licensee, that will be renewed with those special conditions taken down with renewal application. Lastly, we have continuation, termination of special conditions for LaFamosa Inc., trading as LaFamosa, liquor license 121433045003. The special conditions that are sought to be reimposed and have been in place for several years now are as follows. Licensee shall control loitering in the adjacent area to the licensed premises by posting signs and/or calling for police assistance. Licensee shall provide distinctive attire for security personnel, which identifies their status as security personnel. Licensee shall maintain a video camera on the exterior of licensed premises and shall enter video film for time and date and maintains said tapes for at least 15 days. Licensee shall not alter the premises from the layout shown in the sketch plan previously filed with the City Clerk, without first obtaining the approval by City Council by resolution. And lastly, the licensee shall be in compliance with ordinance O-029609, as amended relative to educational requirements for owners and managers. I did have an opportunity to speak to the principal of this particular establishment, and he has no objection to the reimposition of these special conditions upon renewal for the 16, 17 license.
Is anybody here representing LaFamosa this evening? Any representation? Or anybody from the public like to comment on these special conditions renewal for LaFamosa? Anybody from the public? Seika, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Similarly, we will have this particular licensee renewed with the special conditions at the time that it's advised for renewal. At this time, we consent the agenda with the opportunity, again, for the public to comment. That concludes the ABC matters for this evening. Thank you, counsel, for the patience and indulgence. Counsel is here, and obviously leave, since the most matters have been concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we have ordinances on Saturday, 602, ordinances to grant Academy even within the Plum Street right of way to Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, with the 10 Plum Street Academy project. If anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody from the public on this particular ordinance? Tina?
Move to the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have resolutions this evening, 642 to 697. Would anybody like to comment on any of the particular resolutions this evening? Anybody on the resolutions? Yes, sir.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick. I'm trying to be quick. What I'm really interested in is the purchase of the weapons, the weapons for the act, 170 weapons. Can you tell me, yes, 686, can you tell me what, what's the breakdown of these weapons?
I'm pretty sure the police handgun, Captain, can you tell us what these weapons are, please?
Just to replace all of the sidearms that the officers carry today, our current sidearms are approaching 11 years old. The expected lifespan is of 10 years for a police firearm, and they're, they're wearing out. It's just a replacement, as it's a model, so when they, so the exact same caliber, it's almost the same, not just replaced.
Who makes the guns?
We're still looking into it, but right now.
Are they made in America?
Six-Hour, yes, made in America, and that's where we're looking to replace them. Can you just tell me a little bit about any of the safety features for the guns?
Do you know any of the characteristics of the gun, the safety features, or anything that you can talk about?
They're double action, which requires a full trigger pull. Hammer is not cocked without having a full trigger pull. Similar to guns we have now. And what, it's going to be done with the old weapons?
What happens to the old weapons, Captain?
The old weapons are traded in, we're given money for them, they're not destroyed, they go back to Six-Hour, and a portion of the money goes back, is applied to the new bill.
Are you seeing the new weapons?
Yes. So will the department be trading in 170 weapons? We'll be trading in, I think we have 160 right now. We'll be trading in all the weapons we have now. All the, all the, all the sidearms?
Yes.
All the sidearms. Okay. And can you tell me, over the years, have any of these weapons been lost?
Have any weapons been lost?
Yes, lost or stolen? I do not know. And I have to check, I mean, I'm not going to, I wouldn't.
Mr. Cradaville, you're taking a situation, buying handguns, replacing new handguns, updating our handguns. Now you're taking it to a whole different.
If you're asking.
Avenue, obviously, for some reason, that we're not prepared to answer at this time.
I can say that, if you're asking why we're returning 160, I said that's the exact number, but that's what we have now. I don't know, or what, we, our department has grown, so we have to have a few extra in case there's a shooting or a break, so we are buying more than we traditionally bought in the last line. That's why. There's 140 some off, there's 155, I think, so you're getting extra.
That's what you said.
Right, okay. Now, I am concerned that we're not able to say for sure if any of the guns have been lost. I can't say today. I can report back in the next meeting. I'm not going to comment on something a lot easier.
We're not prepared to answer that today. You're taking it into a whole different direction.
It wasn't a question.
We'll find, we'll find that answer out for you for the next meeting.
Okay, okay, I'd be very, very curious to know if, you know, these service weapons have been stolen or lost. I, I want to speak about, I guess it's going to be 650 is the hearing for Casmas, and I know that he already dismissed the council, but I think you made a poor decision by scheduling this hearing for 4:30 PM. As you know, one of the council members, Ms. Escobar, had said she can't make it to these meetings until 5:30. That's why they're at 5:30 in the summer instead of 5:00. So now, while she's absent, you've moved up the start time of your July 20th meeting to, I guess, accommodate the bar that has 22 counts against it. And I don't think that's fair to Ms. Escobar, and fair to people who voted.
We'll let her know that you're carrying that.
Okay, I just, it just doesn't seem.
Well, how do you, let me ask you a question, since you're, how do you know that somebody hasn't spoken to or written to her if that was okay with her? Do you know that?
I don't know, do you? Apparently not.
Apparently not what?
Did that happen or not? I mean, because that's. I mean, this was a suggestion from the city attorney. And I'm saying was that it was a bad suggestion, you shouldn't have made that decision.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Take your time, I have no available study.
Thank you, go ahead. This, this, the reason is, the agenda was not put on the website until this morning, I think, so not the usual schedule.
Mr. Cradaville, take your time.
Okay, thanks. Oh, I want to ask about the 673, the solar project. Can you tell me, you know, why the agreement is being amended again?
I believe it's to add one additional site, which is 40 Van Dyke, which was not part of the original first round of solar panels being installed, either by the city department or your authority.
Maybe additional time for paying the governmental approvals. The deadline initially is March 31st, so they want to move that out to August 31st, 2016, in order to get the approvals to accommodate that site. And that's why we're going to.
Interesting. Can you tell me what kind of approvals, what, or?
Whatever governmental approvals that are required to put up solar panels on one of the next areas, the solar company made the request.
Okay, so it's, is that the request of the solar company? And, okay, I guess I'll have to ask, it's, you mentioned that 40 Van Dyke wasn't in the original plan, why, why wasn't it, or why is it being added now? What has changed about it? Is it, is it going to be a school for much longer?
I don't know if it's going to be a school for much longer, Mr. Cradaville. As I know is, they want to put up solar panels on it, and they need more time to get the governmental approvals. I don't know much about how to put them up, or how long it takes to get the approvals. Trying to accommodate a solar program that I think has been very successful in the city. We want to continue that project.
Great, great, I wanted to ask about that. Can you tell me what has, what has the benefits been for the city? Like, is there a number of?
I don't know who had the SRECs or the money we're getting back. Doug Peddix may know those answers. He's not here tonight. What kind of money we're getting back on our PSEG bills, where we have the solar, Mr. Cradaville, I don't think we're able to answer that this evening.
I can just answer that, partially, the power needs at the treatment plant are, in fact, met by the solar panel field that is out of the treatment plant. I can't speak to what happens at the schools or on top of the parking decks, but we have a very large field out by the water treatment plant, which, I don't have the economics of it at the moment, but it seems to, in part, satisfy our need at the treatment plant.
Great, thank you.
Interesting, and I'd be curious if it matches up with the predictions of, you know, how, how much electricity they would gather. I'm curious, does anybody know if they've been above or below or at the expectations, you know, in terms of how much energy they collect?
Does anybody have those, those statistics? I don't think anybody has, Mr. Cradaville. The best way you get that is on the public service bill, really, you can see what you use, and what you're paid on, and things like that. I'm pretty sure we have that.
I recall, I recall there being some kind of computer setup, actually, in this room at one point, where you could log in and see that all the, how much energy each, you know, site was generating.
That is true. Honestly got bored with it after a while. You know, on a sunny day, you know, some energy was produced. On a cloudy day, it wasn't, but, and we don't really, those flat screens have since failed us, and we haven't really looked at it in a while.
Okay, but it's.
But we do get a monthly bill from the solar company, because they are, you know, obviously producing power for us. We buy it cheaper than PSEG would provide it to us for, so, I mean, I think an evaluation of the total energy produced can be, I can go back and look at the files, bring that information to the next meeting.
Okay, interesting, and the last question would be, how, what's the duration of the agreement? I know we're leasing the panels that the city's to keep.
I don't remember, it's generally speaking, long-term, but I don't remember the exact, the exact term. It is true that we do not own the panels, we allow them to be installed on our property.
NBS, Energy also?
I believe that is the, it's a DS.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments on resolutions? Anybody on the resolutions?
Mr. Stevens, before you take a motion on consent agenda, I just want to read 50 from you, which will carry Casmas here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, please do.
My municipal council, whereas it knows, knows the charges filed against Casmas Inc. trading as JJ Tavern, Lounge 732, the holder of minority bill consumption license 124233034003, in the City of New Brunswick, dated April 12, 2016, which violates violations of the New Jersey Administrative Code, New Jersey statutes. Whereas City Council by Resolution R-061609, set June 15, 2016, at 5:30 PM for hearing on said charges. Whereas on June 15, 2016, at 5:30 PM, Casmas Inc., trading as JJ Tavern, Lounge 732, be it the council, Paul Seika, to respond to said charges. And whereas council for the licensee, along with the city attorney, the City of New Brunswick, has requested that the hearing be carried to July 20, 2016, at 4:30 PM. Now therefore be it redeveloped by the City Council, the City of New Brunswick, the hearing on the matter of Casmas Inc., trading as JJ Tavern slash Lounge 732, be set for July 20, 2016, at 4:30 PM. We have further exhaust certified copies of the resolution be provided to the City Clerk, the city administrator, city attorney, director of police, Detective Ryan DeRog, Paul Seika Esquire, and Casmas Inc. Thank you.
Thank you. I give a motion on a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
State on 684, yes.
So noted. Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Now moved to the public portion of the meeting. Anybody who'd like to address the City Council? Please step up to the microphone, five minutes to come on up, do yourself. Right up.
Mr. Mullins?
Yes, sir.
I want to just, Steve Ostergren, said a couple things, people would say, come for a council meeting, so I'm here. If the council would consider enacting an ordinance and perhaps amending an existing one. I'm not a resident of the town, but I'm a business owner and a property owner. I'd just love to get rid of these. I have to collect literally hundreds and hundreds of these for my properties. I consider them litter. Housing officers consider them litter and debris on my property, which I'd be ticketed for. They're not addressed to anybody, but they're just thrown on steps, trip and fall hazard, porches, front yards, driveways. I just got these for, from one property today.
Moved down by smoke load once.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. It's a company called CBA, they're in Elmwood Park. Again, they're not addressed to anybody. In my opinion, they're just simply litterable. If I walked down the street through red solar cups around every street I walked down, I'd probably be ticketed. These people are doing it, and I don't know if they have a license or they're allowed to by somebody, or a permit, but I'd love to see it go away.
What are your names again, sir?
Steve Ostergren.
Steve Ostergren. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, Mr. Egan, members of council, this is a problem that the city attorney saw this been dealing with before I came to the City Council. We get complaints all the time about this. I'm very familiar with this company. I've corresponded with them, I've dealt with their council. Unfortunately, they're legally able to do that, okay? They're able to distribute these packets. They're able to distribute these packets. We have an ordinance that talks about that they have to be bound property so it doesn't become debris. Then putting in those bags, unfortunately, under some case law of North Jersey, is sufficient for purposes of...
Money.
Yes, exactly. What, what I will tell you, and I told many residents, is there's a one eight hundred number, which I've tested myself, and works, because all my neighbors get them, but I don't. And I'm waiting for the day that I do get one, because once I do, you know what the response is, is that you can go and file the summons against them in municipal court. They are annoying. I know they're not wanted for a lot of, a lot of our residents. Unfortunately, it's legal, and it's a difficult battle to stop that type of thing.
Do you have the eight hundred number?
Not, not on me. I have it in my file. Oh, it's right on the bag.
I called them on Monday.
Yeah.
And, and I was working, giving them several property addresses, and the girl who answered the phone, her response was, I don't think, I don't think I can do all of this. And I said, do I need to hang up and call back nine more times?
Individually.
Individually, and then we can do it? Or we can make it simpler for both of us? And she's like, well, I just can't promise anything about this.
Well...
That was the response I got. And I said, what company is this? Is she C B A?
I think everybody feels the same way you do, and if there was something we could do about it to stop it, we would, so...
I mean, I understand how it's lit. If it's bound, it's not litter, but still debris. They're gonna, they're gonna ticket me for it if I don't, I don't pick it up. Why am I responsible for four to five hundred times a year having to remove those from my properties?
Well, the case I'm getting seems to say that you have the ability to opt out. It's like a do not call list, I suppose.
Yeah, maybe it's okay, I think, I don't know, you know, it's more...
Well, I called, sir.
I sympathize with you, sir. But it does work, and I've tested it at a couple other properties, some, some neighbors, and it, it has worked. And I'm waiting for the day that they slip up, but they have.
I called mine. And then my next question would be to amend an existing ordinance. As a, as a landlord over in the fifth and sixth ward in the college area, I'm subject to Mr. Weaver and Mr. Dixon's and all those guys' tickets, which I have no problem with. I spoke to Charlie just today in court, one of my properties, and I said, my tenants deserve it. Give me the hammer, whatever they get, because they're, I've told them, I've told them, I've told them. My issue is that you have to realize it's a college town with the transient student population, which turns over probably almost every year, maximum usually two years. It's all new people. And I know, I understand the ordinance. It goes to the property address, not the tenants. I understand that. My issue is when I have a bunch of sloppy tenants that got their fourth or fifth ticket during their tenancy, I'm getting the hammer when I go down to court. Justifiably so, no complaint, make the fines higher. I don't care. I'd love to have a written schedule of them also, but my issue is that if they move out June first, I get some nice new tenants in, they might be nineteen, their first time living off campus, they're not really aware. I give them garbage, amend them, don't lease, after speaking with Maria Cody upstairs one time. I edit that in, try to educate them. They just don't know the rules. They put their garbage out the wrong day. They should get a sixty-five dollar ticket. I take a picture of it, I text that into the group, text to my tenants, try to go through that education process with them at that point. The problem is, it never really resets. So my crappy tenants that finally graduated and moved out, I have my great new tenants that we want to welcome to New Brunswick off campus, part of the college experience. I gotta explain to Ally's dad why I have a five hundred dollar fine plus thirty-two dollar court cost. They just moved in to New Brunswick. This sort of happened last year, and it was Ally's dad. I'm like, well, it's the New Brunswick, he was, my daughter's been living there for ten days. She put the garbage out the wrong day. Why is she getting a five hundred dollar fine? And my only question is if the council would consider amending these existing ordinance to provide an annual reset. My tenants get three, four, five, six fines in a year? Hammer them. I don't care. But if it's, there's new people, it, it's not their, it's, it's my house's sixth fine, but it might be my second or third set of tenants at that property, and they're getting hammered for the sins of people before them. And I don't think that's fair, that's all. And I, I have no problem analyzing the people that deserve it.
We'll take a look into that. Maybe there's something, a formula we can design where you notify us that you have new tenants in there, somehow.
Happy to do that.
We could do, we could take, we'll, we'll have the city attorneys all just take a look at it.
Yeah, happy to do that. Again, you guys have my, my stuff at rent control, at parking, you have my leases, I have my tenants' names, whatever. If there's one, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll look into that.
President, I think when your father was here, he tried to do something about that way back, you know, when they were happy sitting in the thing. And again, unfortunately, the law...
There you go. My question is a pretty easy.
What's your name, sir?
Brendan Brito. How are you doing? I'm good. I'm a...
Student?
I'm a student at Middlesex College, and I'm a military veteran as well. I'm, just want to ask a couple questions about your city council. Are all the members of your city council elected or appointed?
Elected.
Elected? Okay. What do you do in the event, in the event of a tie, like, on a vote? Does that happen? This is my twister, I'm sorry.
It's a push, yeah. You're losing big money on that.
Yeah, no, it doesn't get adopted. You have to have it in charge.
You have to have, you talking about a tie, voting in session here, or about...
In session.
Yes, it gets, what's the word I'm looking for?
Denied.
Denied. It's, it doesn't win. You have to have a majority.
Okay. What do your meetings typically consist of? Like, what does a typical meeting consist of you do?
Well, our meetings are the first and third Wednesday of every month. They consist of adopting resolutions and ordinances governing the city of New Brunswick. So if you want to use the jogging path in Bugle Park to have an event, or the pavilion, or any particular park or anything like that, you supply us with the paperwork, the correct documentation, and the insurance, and we'll put it on our agenda. If we see it's, everything's legal, we'll adopt things like that here at the city council. And budgets for the city.
Are there any...
If you want, you can meet after Mr. Anderson. You can meet the whole...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
What are the individual responsibilities of each council person? Like, besides the meetings here, do you have any other responsibilities?
Well, these are supposed to liaison to a particular form of the government branch of the, of the city of New Brunswick. Like, I'm the liaison to the parking authority. Mr. Anderson is the liaison to, what is that? Give me resources, who's board of...
Plague, plague board.
Plague board, yeah.
City market.
City market.
Okay. So you just liaison to different departments within the city? Do you guys follow any set of rules or guidelines, such as a constitution?
Of course.
You have a constitution for the town?
No. The one that's the same one that everybody else follows.
I think so.
In the state.
In Robert's rules of order.
And for both sides of it.
Okay. How long can someone serve on the city council?
As long as they get elected. There's no term limits for a city council in Robert's order, or the position of mayor in the city of New Brunswick.
No term limits?
No term limits.
Okay.
You're probably one of the best reporters we've had here in a long time. That guy who showed up. Precise and, and bright questions.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you would like to tell me about your council and what you guys do?
Well, like I said, why don't you wait the end of the meeting, and one of these gentlemen, I think, I'll be signing stuff, you can certainly, or this guy, or Mrs. Barladi, or whoever. I mean, leave everybody out, but we'll certainly be glad to talk to you after the meeting and go give you a little more information.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Anderson. Good luck in school.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Pratt?
Good evening, once again, members of the council. I, I wanted to say, for all these businesses that are subscribing, you know, to this service, there's a much better way to get their message out. They can advertise the New Brunswick today, and we're happy to put inserts in our newspaper. And we don't want them to be litter, because we don't want people to read them, and so, you know, we're, we are the community newspaper here, and it's one to spread the word that, you know, we're happy to include all voices. We just did a nice story today about Mr. Lockland being recognized by Ms. Moore a couple meetings ago, and so, you know, we are, we want to showcase all the good things going on in New Brunswick, as well as the things that need a light shine from.
Fair enough.
So, yeah, just wanted to, to say that. I know everybody probably wants to get going home, so that's all I have for today, but I hope people keep reading New Brunswick Today. We have a new issue coming out this week, and the offer's still on the table for any elected officials. If you want to have a, you know, a piece that you write, a column, or some, some kind of message that you want to get out there, you know, the, the offer's on the table, we'll run that for you. We're also always willing to, to run advertising for any local businesses that want to reach all of New Brunswick.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Yes, sir, step up, sir. Attention. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. George Dawson, the city historian, fellow one in place in New Brunswick. Thank you for approval of the Forte Waugh program on July third. This is an event we've had, to some extent, for a number of years. This Buckle Park last year, we decided to try it in Boyd Park this year, the quest of, at the suggestion of a member of the city market board. Of course, it's a larger facility, and it's, actually has seating there, because that was Buckle Park, we had, we're trying to bring, bring seating. This is, will precede the city fireworks event, but it's not a lead-in to the city fireworks, it's an independent event. It's a, celebrates a salute to the American Army, which is important, New Brunswick following the Battle of Marne in seventy seventy-eight. And General Washington ordered a four-door salute, of course, of their performance on the battlefield, which they held. And it just happened to be on the Fourth of July, seventy seventy-eight. He didn't intend to be in New Brunswick on that day. He just happened to be here. And sometimes it's recognized as the first official celebration of the Fourth of July, it was the second anniversary of the caution, approved the declaration. But it is a, in effect, a military declaration of independence, and Washington wanted the world to know that the Army was now winning the battle for independence, and he thought it might occur fairly soon. It didn't occur for another six years, as it happened. But this is an event which happened in New Brunswick. It's of initial significance, and we're trying to bring in people to visit the city to see this, see this event. It's educational, it's historic, and everybody should come.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Thank you. If we get to play how to do it, we'll...
I was there, too.
He was there, too, all right. Anybody else like to comment this evening? Anybody in the public comment section? Anybody else? Seeing that? Yes?
This Saturday, I don't know if Director Wilson's left. Vulcan pioneers celebrate Juneteenth, which is a commemoration of when the slaves were first grew up, when they found out they were free. Celebration is this Saturday, starts at eleven A M. It's from eleven to four, and it's parade first, starting on Rimson Avenue, all with Pine Street Park. We want to invite everybody, members of the council, everybody who can be there. I'm not sure whether, regardless of weather, it's going to be a nice day, but it's the first celebration that we've had in New Brunswick, and if many people can make it, we just want to invite everybody out. I don't see Director Wilson, so sure.
He was here.
If he was here. Anybody else?
We're in market, that you left earlier.
I missed anything.
Yeah, I believe you. Got another meeting to go.
Okay, all right. I think we've covered everything, but it's eleven A M. Probably at the start of Wednesday night, and so, all at Pine Street Park.
Thank you very much.
It's going to be a celebration, it's not just a parade, it's going to be a whole bunch of events going on at the Pine Street Park.
Thank you.
Just, just a little point, Pine Street Park is not open yet.
I'm sorry.
Still under construction, but we closed the street, right?
Yes, yes.
And Potrainer, but the Pine Street Park is also known as Recreation Park. Yes, sir, you have a question?
I should speak. Recreation Park. I'm Chris Duranco from N J Skate Shop, skateboard store at one sixty East and a half. We were hoping to do an event this coming Tuesday at Recreation Park. It's not complete. We're hoping to do an event with bands, this skateboard shoe company, next month at Recreation Park, if it's done, hopefully. I don't know if it's going to be completed, but I'm on the list today for approval for closing Y Hall for two hours on Tuesday.
And we proved that.
And I just wanted to come and say thanks to everybody in advance. We were at twenty-nine Easton for nine years. Recently got run out of there because of the heroin problem on our street. And we're now at one sixty Easton, and I just want to thank you all in advance for working with me.
You're being a little bit working for the park, right? Getting that going?
Absolutely, yeah.
At one point, we're working on the, right now, the grand opening, the official opening of the park. It is likely to be very late in July, but when it is open, only the hardscape portion of the park will be open. The turf needs two growing seasons to succeed. So the grassy areas of the field of that park are going to be fenced off for probably another six months or so. But the hardscape will be open, which, which includes the skateboard park, the water feature, some of the gardens and things like that. I think it'll still be a very meaningful thing to reopen the park, but the, the turf areas are going to be off limits for another six months.
And we're going to have some, we're going to have fencing up and some type of signage?
We're, it'll most likely, yes. And it'll probably be a change order to the existing contract, but that's not the for you yet. But yes, there'll be some sort of fence and signage and other means of trying to discourage people.
And whenever the grand opening is decided upon, there's a lot of local skateboarding professionals in there that could help with that, lend a hand.
Did you know Mr. Lockland is a professional skateboarder?
I can tell. She's not looking.
So we'll be out there with the stick.
Stick thin, stick thin.
All right.
Thank you very much. Tried it for two months.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anybody else for public comment this evening? Anybody else? Yes, sir, you want, you want to put twice?
Can I use it like my last thirty seconds or forty-five seconds?
Twenty-eight seconds, go.
Twenty-eight seconds.
Go ahead.
Just following up on him, like, obviously, he said twenty-nine Easton Avenue, run out of business for a heroin problem on the street. I'm around the corner, and to be mindful of the larger problem of homelessness in New Brunswick otherwise, I'm going to say there's a vagrancy issue up there in that area.